We will call the December 3 meeting to order at 6:30. That is off and I didn't change that, I meant to. We have a quorum, we do have two council people absent, that'll be Amanda and Rick. Rick was gonna be here, he got stuck in traffic on his way back home. So luckily, we have enough people to move forward. We will say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to me, Texans, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we will open up with our first item would be the public hearing. Violation of city code, junk vehicle, a public nuisance, section 78-167, an abatement of the nuisance, removal from public or private property, disposal located at 14 Tyndall. This time, the hearing is open.
Can y'all hear me okay? I'm not great with microphones, can you hear me alright?
Yeah, you kinda gotta get right on it.
Right on it?
Perfect.
Okay, you can hear me now?
Perfect.
Okay, well, that address is my brother's house, Jay Sullivan, and he actually hasn't been there for the last two years. Two years ago, on Christmas, he went into the hospital, he was in the hospital for almost five months. He went into a care facility because he wasn't able to come home. And so, I take responsibility for things as they stand at his house, I took care of all of his bills. I actually live in Houston, I worked full-time as a landscape architect, and I did everything I could to keep his life together for two years. And that was quite a bit. So anyway, he just got home on November 10th, and I know the letter arrived before that, but I wanted to let y'all know that we have hauled two of the cars away. The truck that's considered a junk vehicle is actually being fixed. It will be driven. There's one car that Jay needs to make up his mind about, but I just wanted you to know that we hauled away a trailer full of junk on Sunday, and that we have two of the cars in the shop right now, and the third one's either gonna be, we're either gonna dispose of it, or get it fixed. But, the truth is, is that taking care of those cars and his boats, we were fined for the boats, I paid the fine on the boats, we had the boats pumped out twice, and we did the best we could to keep everything up for Burl. My home in Houston was much worse off than what happened down here. And I just came to kinda make a plea for Jay, because he has a hard time hearing now. He had cancer, he had a brain tumor, he ended up having his immunotherapy tear up his whole digestive system. He wasn't able to eat for five months. So the guy's really made a comeback on his own. The doctor said palliative care hospice. And my plea is, is just give us a little time to get it figured out, but we've made progress in the last week. That's about all I can say.
Okay, Mike, you have any comments?
I can say I've driven by the address, and some of the stuff has been abated, that is absolutely honest.
Counsel, you have any questions?
How much time do you need to get all the items resolved?
Well, the only, that's another thing, I needed a little clarity on the items that needed to be resolved, because I got the understanding just from this and the pictures that it was just the cars. But, you know, I felt like there was a lot that we could do to make it, improve the property, which we did. I mean, we cleaned up a lot of stuff downstairs and took it away. But I need to have clarity on everything that's expected before I know when we can have that done.
We can meet with you on that?
Okay.
Or discuss that, I know you're not, you're not local, so reach out to me in the next few days?
I mean...
And we'll put something together with you to where, we didn't want to hit everything at once. We wanted to start with a measurable amount. And so, we didn't make an exhaustive list of anything that might be in violation, we hit the obvious stuff that, that we thought would be the easiest to address. So if you wanna get together over the next several days...
Can we talk on the phone?
Absolutely.
I mean, my...
You don't, by get together, I just mean communicate.
Okay, I mean, my office is in northwest Houston, so I...
You don't need to be down here for us to do that, we'll, we'll go by, we'll look at it exhaustively, and we'll get together with a plan for you to help you out.
Okay, because I would like to say this too. Because Jay was not 65, he didn't have Medicare, and he's not on Medicaid. So, God bless anybody that gets sick and doesn't have those things going for them, because Jay blew through a lot of money in the last year. I just wanna put that out there. So it may take some time, Alex, to get things where we need to go, because, you know, he spent good, almost $100,000 on care. So, I'm not trying to make excuses, but I am trying to say that it may not happen overnight, it may take a little time. But we'll work at it. The one thing that got Jay home was his home. He wanted to come home so bad. I heard about it every damn day, I'm sorry. But I mean, he texted me all the time, "I wanna go home, I wanna go home, I wanna go home." And so, I wasn't gonna try and convince him to sell that place, when I knew that's what got him moving. I'm sorry.
That's alright, ma'am, could you, could you please state your name and address again, so she could write that down, do you mind?
My name is Amy Sullivan. My address is 7515 Haywood Drive, Houston, Texas, 77061. And I can give you my phone number too. You don't need that?
I think we're fine.
Okay, well, thank you so much, I appreciate you, you all taking the time to listen, I appreciate it very much.
And I'd just like, I'd just like to address you, so you know, I know Alex has been checking on, on him for quite a while, in fact, Alex called me one evening last year and said, "Hey, I'm really concerned, can we get an ambulance over here for him?" And I called Kema Fire Department and talked to the chief personally, and they came right over.
Yeah.
And we are not...
That was actually Christmas, two years ago.
Two years ago?
That was, that was two years ago, and...
I'm getting old, time flies, I can't remember.
No, and you know, I don't really wanna take up the meeting with that, because there was, there was a period there, that December, I didn't know what to do.
Yeah.
We, we had Jay in the hospital for a week, and his oncologist, and then the internal doctor that was looking at his esophagus and his stomach, they were like, "There's nothing we can do." And the truth is, is they couldn't even give him a feeding tube into his stomach, because he had gastric paralysis. I mean, I know a whole lot more than I ever knew before about immunotherapy, and cancer, and the things that it can do. And it, it was a real setback for Jay. And not only that, I mean, we lost our mom in 2021, and so I've been responsible for her house, and so this has just been, you know, honestly, I feel bad, because I, I know Jay's place has not looked great, but there, I just didn't know what, how much energy I had to take care of everything.
Well, I, I can assure you, if you get with the city administrator, Mike, we're not here to put somebody out, we're, we're not here to take the man's home, I can guarantee you that, that's not been part of the conversation. We, we, we want to, and I believe council wants to work with you guys, that's why Mike was trying to explain that, that it's a little at a time. It, it's a little bit at a time. If, if we would've sent a list of everything, it probably would've been so overwhelming, you wouldn't have known where to start.
Yeah.
So I, I think that's where they were starting, is let's, let's look at what's obvious in the ordinance, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, and I think too, it'd be helpful, Jay has a really hard time hearing, which is one of the reasons I'm up here speaking tonight, and so if we can get it all in writing too, so that he and I can kinda work through it together, and discuss what we need to get done, and, and how we can go about it, that would be helpful.
Thank you for coming.
And I'm quite certain that, you know, if you needed help, put the word out, I'm sure a lot of the residents, community, they'd be more than happy to come over and help clean up some of the stuff.
Well, we have a guy that used to help my parents out, and he helped, he helps me with my parents' house, and he came down, he was keeping, he was at least keeping the yard mowed, that we were getting that much done, and taking away palm fronds, and, but you know, I mean, there was a lot that we cleaned up on Sunday, I mean, we took a whole trailer full of junk out, but there's still more.
Yeah.
And, and Jay needs, you know, somewhere along the line, somebody missed the boat allowing the guy next door to build as high as he did, because that's really affected Jay's property in a big way, you know, all that runoff that, and as a landscape architect, I see it everywhere, I see it all the time, but it really has affected Jay. And so he had some pretty much do-it-yourself drainage that looked pretty bad out there, I'll admit it, but it worked. But I was telling him, there's things that we can get done that'll help improve the property too, so...
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Does council have any more questions?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, yes, we would be happy to reach out and see who we could get to help, because I, I was talking to the mayor today, saying, "I know somebody that we need to get involved with to help them out there in the hospital, they can't take care of themselves." I had to go over there and take care of their pets after they'd been alone for a couple of days, because she didn't have anybody else, she called me.
Yeah.
So, I wanna, like I say, I'm gonna ask for assistance with her, and we can do the same thing here.
Well, and I, I wanted to speak to this too, Alex, I, I have felt so bad that I didn't talk to you after we got Jay in the hospital that Christmas. I, I really didn't know what to do. Jay's very stubborn, like many people I know, but anyway, he, he didn't wanna get help. And I am as a power of attorney now, but at the time, I wasn't. And you can't, I'm just telling, you know, I've been through this kinda with my mom, Jay was a different story, you know, there just aren't the same kind of resources. But I know that y'all were a huge help, and I just, I really always wanted to thank you for that. Thank you all so much, I very much appreciate it, Amy.
Can I make a motion that we postpone this to the first meeting? Oh, I'm sorry.
This is just a hearing, there's an action item on it later. So would anyone from the public like to speak on this subject? Okay?
Well, I know that, I know, I keep coming back, I'm sorry, but I know that, I think her name is Rosalyn, across the canal.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I've talked to her several times, and I know that she had a problem with it. And, but she has seen that we've made every effort we could in terms of the boats, that they don't, you know, I understood how she felt, because I've lost a beach house in a, in a hurricane, so, you know, it happens, she was worried about Jay's boat coming into her house. And so there are things that we really need to, to get sorted out, and that's all I can say, there's just stuff that needs to be done that's done right.
Okay, thank you. Alright, having no one else, we'll close the public hearing. And it is 7:45, I'm sorry, 6:45, I don't know why I keep looking at that. We will move on to the next item. The next item will be reports from council, Ed Waters.
I got a call Saturday evening from Phyllis, we all probably pretty much know Phyllis, on 6:30 Clearlake Road, and she was in the hospital, and her dogs had been by themselves for a couple of days, and she just asked if I would come over there and let her dogs out. And I did for several days, and while being there, I looked and I noticed that someone had, was just coming through her yard with a riding lawnmower, and just cutting the biggest portion of it, but not the outlying area, so there was, oh, two and a half feet, three feet of grass in the, you know, in the corners, and the fence lines, and things like that, that my neighbor, Mike Schultz, and myself did that on Saturday. But there's a lot of other things that could be done around there that she can't do. And so I'm going to message out, if I can get some assistance this weekend, we can do some tree trimming, some pressure washing, just the small stuff that would help keep up, where I could just go over there and, and do the weeding after this is over, but it's got a beautiful oak tree in the backyard that needs some assistance, and like I say, there's a lot of pressure washing that could be done, so I'm going to ask for that. So if y'all know anybody, tell them to, to message me, I'm also gonna put one out on Facebook.
Alright, thank you, Ed. Jeff Carroll?
Only thing I really have this evening is, just wanna thank the city, Chief Donaldson, for the, the tree lighting, I wasn't able to make it, I was out of town. Saw the pictures, the videos look great, just wanna thank the civic club, the city just for doing that, looks great, everybody did a great job.
Alright, thank you, Ed. Alex Scanlon, or Jeff, I'm sorry, Alex Scanlon?
Ken, not too much to report, I had some, more progress is happening with, with some of the, the work that Mike's had, the engineer work on, details for the city, and moving forward on all those projects, so they are, are still progressing, so thanks, Mike, for that.
Alright, thank you, Alex. So, I'm gonna start out with giving the civic club a big shout-out for all that they do for our city. Georgette is, her term is up, I'm trying to talk her into staying, so y'all help me do that, because she's very organized, and she does a great job with the civic club. I don't know who's gonna take that over and do as good a job as her, but she's outstanding in that role. The, everyone from the civic club turned out to help, whether it was at the tree lighting, bluffing garland, helping hang some lights, we had a really good turnout this year with, with helpers, so, so that was a plus. My wife did, once again, an outstanding job with the tree, it was beautiful. I wanna thank the EDC and the civic club for their sponsorship for that, along with our police chief, David Donaldson, not just the PD for showing up, but personally, he provides those fireworks, and it was an outstanding fireworks show, I've already got several compliments on that, so thank you, David. The civic club will be hosting a progressive party, December 13th, which is Friday, the first stop will be posted on the marquee out here, sometime, I guess, next week, that'll be the week before it happens, since we're, this'll be our last meeting of the year, will it not? I believe so. So, I wanted to announce that, because there won't be another civic club report before the end of the year, so pay attention to however you communicate with the civic club, and the marquee for that. Appreciate you, Ed Waters, I had something written down to say about that, reaching out to Phyllis and taking care of her, that's kinda what we do around here. In the near future, you're gonna see, one, one thing I noticed this weekend, helping around this clubhouse is, Steve Wordes may not like me when I'm done, but there's a couple big oak trees over there that you have to move over to this side of the road to get by. We're gonna be trimming up some of those trees around the island, so these big trucks can get down the street. I noticed there's a lot of, lot of stuff hanging over the edge of the road. So, don't run over those guys, help those guys, pay attention to them when they're working, they're gonna be doing that. Parking lot, kind of a parking lot update, that, we're all probably waiting, "Hey, when we gonna open this thing, when we gonna do this, when are they gonna start working again?" Well, they had to wait for that concrete to cure a little bit before we could park on it, they, they told Mike and I today that they were gonna mobilize some equipment, there is some rain coming starting tomorrow, but they're gonna get back on that and open up the other side of that parking lot. It will not be striped right away, when they finish the other side, they will stripe everything at one time. The boat ramp, the boat ramp, I talked to them today, I talk to them twice a week, trying to make sure they don't forget who I am, and who we are, about our boat ramp project that's been carrying on forever. We are still waiting for the final approval from the marine and wildlife, to say, "Okay, we're done, move on to construction," but I feel like we're pretty close, because that three to four months has kinda taken its toll, so I think that we're gonna get some good news there pretty soon, after talking to them this morning. I know I say that a lot, I'm trying to be positive instead of negative, I do feel like the end's near, at this point, we don't have another resolution for that, but I do think that that's coming soon. And last but not least, I wanna give a shout-out to our staff. Jorge Odie, phenomenal. It's already time to determine whether you're gonna run for council, or you're gonna run for mayor again, it's hard to believe, it's almost been two years. But, but I will tell you, I, I couldn't do the job I do without them. They're the ones that make me good at what I do. Not that I'm good at what I do, but I feel like I'm doing okay. This staff is amazing, the help that they provided me from walking in that door, to the help that they provide me before every meeting, it's amazing. We have the best staff in any city in Galveston County, I can assure you of that. And we are lucky, because I notice when I go to some of these Galveston County mayor meetings, we hear about how they're gonna be poaching a police chief, or they're gonna be poaching a city secretary, and all these cities, they're, they're like city administrators, three or four years, and these people are rotating, changing out. These people have been here serving this city, and serving you guys for a long, long time, and I, I believe they enjoy this city, I truly see that every day. They smile when you walk in, they, even the ones that come in to pay tickets that aren't happy about their tickets, if you guys could see the way these people address those people, it, it's amazing how positive they are, so, I know everyone's not here, but thank you very much, Chrissy, and thank you, Cheryl, thank you, David, and thank you, Mike. Thank you also, sir, for keeping me out of trouble. That's the end of my report, and we will move on to staff reports, Chief David Donaldson.
Mayor, council, I attended a management training class at Sam Houston. It was a week-long, got past it, and then I've missed a couple days being sick, but it's good to be back and ready to move forward.
Thank you, David, appreciate you going to get that education too, to become a better chief. City administrator, Mike Graham?
Thank you, Mayor. We submitted the initial report with all attached documents to FEMA. If it makes it through them, it'll pass on to TDM for further consideration, that's the initial step in recovering any money spent on debris removal from Hurricane Barrel. Cheryl has been an enormous help in that, with the record-keeping and everything for our staff, what they call forced account labor, when you're on the FEMA side, so hopefully we'll see some, some remedy for that in the months to come. The RFP for IT services is closed, we had three submissions, which we will score this week, I expect to bring a recommendation to council for consideration at the next meeting. Cheryl completed the RFP packet for mowing services for the city, we'll begin advertising that tomorrow, and an opening date for those proposals on December 19th. Cheryl is currently completing the debris removal RFP, we're shooting to have that one advertised beginning next week. Now, that one's a little bit different, it has to advertise for a full 30 days, because the debris removal is part of our consideration for FEMA reimbursement, if we have a storm, and FEMA requires that you go through all federal procurement procedures, which, instead of a two-week announcement and advertisement, it requires 30 days, so that one'll just take a little bit longer before we can open it. The next and final one we have on the horizon will be for pool maintenance and lifeguard services, and we have a little bit of a window for that one before we have to really crank up, so you'll be seeing that one in the coming months. Colliers is completing the design and specification package, or they completed the design and specification package for future roadway and drainage works, I think Alex mentioned that earlier in his report. The bridge assessment and associated repair and maintenance schedule should be completed later this month. And then, we had an opening created by our resignation a few weeks ago, a couple weeks ago, in Chief Donaldson's department, his administrative assistant for the police department recently resigned, so we're currently revamping that job description, and plan to advertise it either this week or next week, to try to get that position filled as well, and that's all I have.
Alright, thank you, Mike. I wanna mention Teresa, I didn't have Teresa on my mind a minute ago, but you've done an outstanding job with our communication since you've come on, so thank you also. Moving on, we'll go to public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to city council, if the topic of discussion is related to an item on the agenda, the comments may be made now, or at the time of the agenda item is discussed. If the, if the topic of discussion is not related to an item on the agenda, the city council cannot deliberate or take any action at this time. Comments from the public should be limited to a maximum of three minutes per individual, no yielding of time is permitted. Would anyone like to address the council?
Lynda Machowski, 1019 North Shore, wanna thank all you good people for being here tonight. Recently, an offer of $500,000 was made by the city to purchase Ms. Vow's property. This purchase price was declined. I'm asking that this found money of $500,000 be given to Ms. Juanita, Ms. Joanna Florrie, Ms. Juanita Florrie's relative, immediately, as an early gift of goodwill, to make restitution for harm allowed by the city, to defraud her of everything she owned at 319 Maple. She was defrauded of her home, her land, her waterfront, and every possession in her home, pots, pans, bed, linens, photos, toothbrush. A city official took everything from her, leaving hatred in her heart for corrupt city officials, the government, and Clear Lake Shores. Local profiteers made lots of money off the sale of this councilman's land at Jarboe Bayou Park. It is immoral what has happened to Ms. Florrie. I grew up in this area, and I have been a resident of Clear Lake Shores for 35 years. It has been a common standard practice that crooks get into position of government in Clear Lake Shores, to take whatever they want. I hope that's ending. The kings can do no wrong supposedly, and they are given governmental sovereign immunity. It is disgusting, and has gone on for decades in Clear Lake Shores, and this entire Bay Area. Complicity by buddies and power keeps the abuses and atrocities ongoing. I am asking that this stop. Stringent vetting of all government positions of power must happen going forward in Clear Lake Shores. Putting friends in place and allowing great theft and threats to happen to keep whistleblowers quiet must no longer be allowed. I recently received a letter in the mail identifying the ghost account, Tim Taylor, whose false information posted on Facebook about my home's legality led to threats of acid to my face. I have been, I have been the continuous whistleblower of crimes being committed by government officials against innocent residents in Clear Lake Shores. Elder abuse and defrauding the federal government with false elevations are blatant crimes, so is hiding evidence in the clerk's office, extortion, perjury, theft of permits from city hall. The taking of property, Ms. Florrie's, by a city official is wrong. She does not have time in this life to wait on the outcome of an ACLU, American Civil Liberties Union lawsuit. I am in hopes that this can be avoided, and good faith shown by honest compassionate servers of the people in government that we have in place now in Clear Lake Shores. Please write a check to Ms. Florrie of $500,000, even though she deserves so much more from our city. Please don't tell me what you can't do, but what you will do for her as restitution. The city's pocketbook should take the hit financially...
Lynda.
...who allowed all of this, not innocent residents. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, not to address any one individual, but I'm gonna let the city and the citizens know, we have not made an offer to anyone, and I believe any one of you can go ask Lyndi if we have. I believe the conversation was brought up in EDC, of discussing that when it first came forward, because Ronnie Richards wanted to bring that forward, as he did to council a couple of times now. And there was a, a dollar figure that was discussed, if she ever got down to it, that the EDC may be interested. And it wasn't even 500,000, it was somewhere between 550 and 600,000, that's what they thought the property was worth. If she ever lowered it that low, they said they would consider talking to her about it. But I can assure you, unless there is somebody outside this room, and the only people that can negotiate for this city are sitting in this room right now, none of us have done that. So if it was someone from the EDC, or someone from Ronnie Richards' friends, or something, I don't know, but no one from this city has made that lady an offer on that property, I assure you of that. That property's not on our mind right now, we have other things we need to be doing with our money. So, I just wanna make that clear before we leave this room, we have not made anybody an offer. So, with that said, if anybody else would like to address the council, feel free. If not, we're gonna close the public comments, and we will move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. Items A through D, council meeting minutes from 11:19, check register 11:14 through 11:27, physical year investment report, physical year financial report. Do we have anything we'd like to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, any questions, any modifications? Or do we have a motion? Y'all make a motion, we approve, approve the consent agenda? I was listening on the...
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Jeff, got a second by Ed, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Uh...
Okay, Alex, you a yea or nay?
Oh, yea.
Okay, all right, motion passes. We'll move on to, uh, item eight, discussion of possible action may be taken on the following items. Action from public hearing for violations of city code, junk, junk vehicle, public nuisance, and abatement of nuisance, removal from public or private property disposal, uh, located at fourteen Tyndall. Do we have a motion on that item?
I make a motion that we extend, um, this thirty days until Mike is able to get his list together and present that to, uh, the homeowner, and then see where we are and go from there.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, would you like? So, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second it.
All right, got a motion by Ed, got a second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Mike?
If I may, I'm not sure that putting a thirty-day window on it really serves us a purpose. If we want to, uh, just push it down the road and have me bring something back after I speak with the family and we work out a schedule, because thirty days may not be a relevant time. Um, ultimately, what my goal is, is to see forward movement on the dramatic code violators, so that they are actually doing something. Some of these places are not gonna be able to fix this short of a tsunami coming in and cleaning out some of the stuff from under these houses, that's not gonna happen. But it's an elephant for some of these, and we just need to keep taking bites. So, I would, I would offer to the council, give me time to work something out with her, so that I can bring you a timeline that's rational, instead of us having to go back and amend it again. Maybe we just, maybe it would be better to push this item for now, bring it back for consideration when I have a better grasp on what she's asking us for. And I, city attorney, I don't know if that's a better resolution to this, but...
Yeah, I mean, somebody just can make a motion to table or to postpone it till the next meeting, um, when you could, and then actually act on, uh, a, you know, a timeline that he decided to bring back. He could do either one.
Well, I think the timeline is, like Mike described, I don't, I don't think we want to say ten days, thirty days, ninety days. I think as long as you have forward movement and you're progressing, I think the city's willing to continue to work. Am, am I right? Is that where you're going with that?
Yeah, so, will we make a motion to table this until the, the next meeting in January, until you have time to talk to them and have some kind of plan of action to go forward?
I'm comfortable with that, absolutely.
Then, at some point, if Mike doesn't get resolution, then we're gonna have to make a decision to take action on the, the items.
Correct, right. Let's give him a chance to come up with some kind of timeline.
So, okay, well, you had originally had his other motion on the floor. So, do you want to amend your motion to, to match what he's saying now?
Yes, uh, make the motion to, uh, extend this until it goes to Mike, until when he comes back to us with, uh, a proposal, or...
At the next meeting?
At the next meeting, yeah.
And is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, got a motion by Ed, got a second by Jeff. Is there any questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion passes. Uh, next item, item B, remove, uh, review and approve participation in the Kroger Texas settlement as a Texas political subdivision. Uh, city administrator, Mike Grant.
So, this is something that the city attorney brought to our attention. Um, nothing is final on this yet, so we don't have an amount that would be coming to the city. This is basically an agreement to not go back after Kroger at a later date. And until they know, um, how many parties there are to this suit, uh, they, they're not gonna have a resolution to how much each entity's going to be entitled to for the recovery. Uh, Dick, are you comfortable speaking of this? Do you want to expound upon it?
Yeah, that's... Well, that, that's exactly what I was gonna say. I mean, there had, has previously been a settlement, um, that, where other cities had made, um, a, a claim on it, and this is now a, a separate one that's in addition to previous ones, um, where, uh, it's, it's with Kroger this particular time. So, if you want to participate in this one, then I think this is one, another one that you need to decide to participate in.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll motion to approve participation in the Kroger Texas settlement as a Texas political subdivision.
Okay. I'll, I'll second that.
Got a motion by Alex, got a second by Ed. Uh, any more discussion on that item? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion passes. Uh, we will adjourn the meeting at seven-oh-six.